Are you ready? Anna?
Ready.
Julie? Ready? Sam? Sam? These are ready, Jim's ready. Kelly, ready? Kelly? Kelly? Ready? I'd like to call the meeting into order. Kathy, please do the roll call.
Mrs. Briscoe?
Here.
Mrs. Tunny?
Here.
Mrs. Ost?
Here.
Mr. Andreessen?
Hello.
Mr. Bush?
Here.
Mrs. McMillan?
Here.
Mrs. Zelinski?
Here.
Okay. Please stand for the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. First time in quite a while, we have no public comment. So I had some comments to discuss on public comment, but since there's no one here, we'll wait till next month to clarify some guidelines to be followed. So since there's no public, we'll move on. MTA.
Good evening. You guys are staying warm. We really have nothing to say tonight, but we do have some special guests. We have Dr. Jessica Niehe here to speak, our school psychologist that tells what she does. And we have the 4th grade team, which Megan Horsh will be leading.
Just trying to... All right. Good evening. I am Dr. Jessica Lucas Niehe, and I am the school psychologist here at Moquena Elementary School. This is the second year that I have been facilitating an executive skills workshop with now 10 general education and special education teachers who all volunteered to participate. Together, we learn how our students' executive skills regulate their behavior and guide their thinking to be successful learners in our classrooms. And we also learn and acquire and share strategies amongst ourselves, how we can support those skills in our classrooms on a day-to-day basis. So far this year, this group of teachers have learned how to foster students' executive skills in regards to their organization, starting and completing their work, thinking before acting, and maintaining their attention throughout their school day. In addition, along the preschool screening team and the play-based assessment team, I have assisted in transitioning many of our earliest learners into our district's preschool program. As of today, we've had three preschool screenings with four more to go this school year. And then also four students who have aged out of their early intervention program have also come in for play-based assessments with at least four more scheduled to come over the next few months. And they actually, just a couple hours ago, got another transition referral from the early intervention program. So they are coming in every week of the school year, it feels like. Just before winter break, I finished creating the spreadsheets and entered the academic fast bridge benchmarking data for winter term across kindergarten, 1st grade, 2nd and 3rd grades as well, along with our reading and math interventionists, assistant principal and principal... Oh, sorry, lost my spot. We began reviewing the progress of students who are currently receiving intervention support, either in reading or math, and talking about their sufficient progress and getting them back to their home classroom. And just before the long weekend, all the grade-level teachers and interventionists were asked to identify students who are in need of reading or math support who currently aren't receiving that additional support right now. And then also identify sources of data to help support why they need additional intervention at this time. And although the grade-level data analysis, or GLDA, meetings were rescheduled next week because of our e-learning days, I know meaningful conversations will be had amongst the grade-level teams, instructional coaches, interventionists, and building administrators to celebrate students' growth and their progress and also to identify how we can support additional students moving forward. Last but not least, I'll pass over to 4th grade. I'm also looking forward to attending the National Association of School Psychologists Annual Convention. And for the first time in like a few years, it's actually going to be somewhere warm this time in February. It's going to be like a month from now. It's going to be in New Orleans during Mardi Gras. But still, it's important. I will be completing half-day professional development workshops and bringing many resources back to Moquena 159 on topics such as creating equitable multi-tiered systems of supports, or MTSS, best practices in school-based autism assessment identification, enhancing parent or family understanding and involvement through effective oral presentation of assessment results through special education evaluations, and current hot topics in special education law. I also like to thank Moquena Elementary School Principal Rachel Torley and interim Director of Student Services Jennifer Volpe for approving my attendance to this national conference. And I look forward to bringing back what I learned to our district. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Megan Horsh, and I'm one of the 4th grade teachers. On behalf of the 4th grade team, I'm here to share what's going on in 4th grade. Tonight, we have Mallory Ansara, Brittany Hench, Jenna Uva, Michelle Kearney, and Tina Coltry in attendance. In math, students are currently working on fractions after completing multiplication and division strategies. This year, 4th grade students have been concentrating on writing using the same format that MJH has adopted called CER, Claim Evidence and Reasoning. Several times a month, students are given a word problem to prove their understanding using CER. We have seen a strong shift in the way students answer mathematical questions, and they now realize there has to be a reasonable explanation on how the answer came to be. In language arts, during the first two quarters, the 4th grade completed the poetry module of EL education. We read "Love That Dog" by Sharon Creech and explored what inspired Jack, the main character, to write poetry. We explored the poetry of Robert Frost, William Blake, Langston Hughes, Valerie Worth, and Walter Dean Myers. Students chose one of the poets to research as a part of an expert group. Once students identified what inspired their expert group poet to write poetry, students found their own source of inspiration and created their own original poems. Each student presented their poem to the class, as well as special guests, including Mr. McAtee, Mrs. Feeney, Dr. Johnson, and Dr. Cohen. The start of the 3rd quarter marked the start of Module 2 in EL education, animal defense mechanisms. Over the next couple of weeks, we have some exciting activities coming up to add to our science and language arts curriculum. We will be bringing in a presenter to guide the 4th grade classes through a squid dissection. Usually, we go to the shed aquarium and participate in a dissection, but due to the shed being under construction, we had to change plans and do it at MIS this year. The dissection not only builds on what students have learned about animal structures in science, but it also connects to the language arts curriculum and the Module 2 lessons that focus on animal defense mechanisms. Students have already completed quite a bit of research on a variety of animals' physical adaptations and behaviors that are used for survival. This real-life experience will allow students to get a better understanding of the concepts discussed in class. Additionally, the 4th grade classes will be going on a field trip to the Big Run Wolf Ranch in Lockport to further discuss North American wildlife and see how these animals use their adaptations and behaviors to survive in the wild.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Horsh, for that update. Anything else from MTA? Okay, no. MCSA? I don't see that. MEF? PTA? Okay, moving quickly. Board of Education?
I have one.
Okay. Sam?
Okay. I struggled with whether or not I was going to do this tonight. And I'm not a very good public speaker, so I apologize ahead of time. But I felt it was pretty necessary for me to clear the record, set the record straight on some of those lines, some things that have been said about me as of late. And I want to make sure everybody understands, or at least knows, none of it's true. In the last 10 years, I've been on quite a few boards and volunteered for a lot of different things. And never in my life have I been attacked in a way, shape, or form as I have been as of late. I really just want to kind of make it known that I am 100% always willing to sit down and talk with anybody who feels like I am doing something wrong or against rules or anything along those lines and happy to share all of the proof that I have that I am not. So if anybody would like to have any conversations with me, I am always available. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Sam. And you? Julie?
Okay. Thank you. Again, thank you to the MTA for bringing the grade level, 4th grade, for being here. Niehe, or Dr. Niehe. Say thank you for taking... It really is nice to see when you come and... What you're doing, and then you're still... So it's really nice. This... We have ups and downs on this table with public... And everything. All great. For our difference of opinion and how that looks like. But I make sure those... If anybody... You know, I enjoy talking with folks. I know we sometimes get entrenched in our... Wonderful book right now called Think Again by Adam Grant. It's the... E-book that has gotten me to think again. It's a great title of a book, and it's just... And I recommend it because it refocuses how we're trying to look at issues, not attack. And if anyone ever feels otherwise with... I am sorry. It ever comes off that way. Ever a personal thing. It's looking at issues. So that this year brings some really great... Our district... Always agree. That's... Let's just think the best of each other and that we all know that we want the best for our school. So that's all I wanted to say about that. And the last thing was, I did send a memo out about the policy committee. It was my fault. I thought it was going to be on the agenda, and it wasn't, and I didn't realize it until later. If you have any questions, send me a note or give me a call. And it's just trying to keep the ball rolling on the policy committee so we don't lose any to getting that work done. Thanks.
Okay. Well, I... Go ahead? No? Okay. Thank you, Jim. All right. So I just have two things really fast. Hopefully, they're fast. Maybe not as fast as Jim. But so the first thing is, I'm not sure how many people are aware or not, but I sometimes think that we don't celebrate the wins at this school enough. We sometimes focus on the negativity, at least in the past few months and things like that. But just something to be aware of, that this district was celebrated in front of statewide from an ISBE document on how we use our ESAR grant funds, recognizing, you know, the use of that. So I just want to acknowledge that, congratulate all the teachers, all the administrators that had a part in that, picking out what to use. I mean, essentially, we used the money for a new ELA curriculum. If you look at our test scores, they are just through the roof. It's another great story that we should be celebrating. You know, that article also mentioned some school districts that did not so great things, you know, building a field house with ESAR grant funds. There was one district that hired a whole bunch of teachers that now can't afford them, so they're going to have to lay them off. So just some things that weren't good. So but to get statewide recognition amongst all the districts, that's something I think we should really be celebrating. And I just want to thank everyone that had a part in that and, you know, just celebrate the good things on that front. And I'm sure that if anyone has a question, Dr. Cohen can easily get you, you know, a link to that article if you want to see it. But to be recognized statewide is pretty impressive. Then my second thing is, I want to give a shout out, and I'm not sure if that's still a thing or not. But so my current freshman, who at Lincoln Memorial Central, you know, she's taking biology like a lot of freshmen take, and she's really struggled with it this past semester, or the first semester of all the classes. And I thought it was pretty cool. Sorry, I'm going to get a little bit emotional with her, but... Sorry. So we were talking about, you know, e-learning, how you look at the second semester. And I know she struggled tremendously with biology. And we were driving to golf the other night, and she's like, you know what? Biology is going to be fun for the first month because we're doing mitosis. And I'm like, mitosis? Who likes mitosis? And maybe science teachers like mitosis. I'm not sure. But she said that when she learned it in 8th grade, Mrs., I'm going to butcher the name, sorry. I know it's Mrs. Gibson, but it's now Musenski, I believe. But, you know, had a lesson for a whole month, and she said how much fun she made it. So I just want to show like how important you guys play in, you know, students even after you leave Moquena 159, the impact. So I just want to give her a shout out. Sorry. Got a little emotional because... All right. Sorry about that, but when you get a 15-year-old, you know, excited about mitosis, it was kind of like... It was pretty moving. So in a strange way, I guess. All right. School improvement plans. I'll turn it over to Dr. Cohen.
I thought you had a couple things. I thought we were... So is this not where we are going to talk about the committees?
No. There is a section, Section 8 of the agenda would be where that would be the time. It's bottom page of the agenda. Next steps on follow-up related discussion or action items. So since committees have been discussed in the past and they're not on the agenda, it would be in that state.
Oh, I see. Okay. And that's when... Well, I guess I would propose that we, at some point... My thing is not for next meeting either. It's just kind of in light of the remote learning that we just pulled the trigger on for the first time this semester. And reading Dr. Johnson, that plan that you had sent, I appreciate that. That was really good background information. But I noticed the plan is through the end of this school year. And so I was just going to suggest that we potentially add that plan revision to the agenda for the parent-teacher advisory committee over the next, you know, maybe over the summer or something so that it could be a part of that process in revising the remote learning plan.
Okay. Okay. Anything else from Board of Education? Okay. Dr. Cohen, school improvement plans?
All right. This time, we'll just turn it over to the principals, Rachel, Dave, and Mike. This is just a mid-year update on the data they've collected so far, the trends that they've seen, and what they're going to be working on for the second semester. As you know, we present the school improvement plans back in September. We're updating kind of where we're at right now, and then we will wrap this up in May with some of our end-of-the-year data, or at least the data we have at that point, to kind of talk a little bit about the things we've done. So with no further ado, Mrs. Torley.
Okay. That's all right. Every early dismissal day is planned, is dedicated to further planning. So they have, teams have a really long time to sit and focus on what the upcoming units will look like. And then the last one, documented team feedback once a month and reviewed with our BLT committee. This is also ongoing. Our surveys, which is the feedback, are actually sent with each module. We're in Module 2. Some are in Module... Most grade levels are in Module 3. One grade level is still in Module 2. Results are analyzed by the leadership team to look for areas for potential support and strengths. And the next slide, those questions are, I can easily navigate materials. Module 1 is in blue, Module 2 is in red. You can see there were some areas of growth. Those... Planning a lesson is really tricky and rigorous. It's laid out for staff members, but because this is our first time using this really, like really depth resource, it's taking us a little bit to really dig in and sink in. But I'm really proud of the work that the teachers are doing. They are focused, they are determined, and I'm really proud of how they're working together. I can use data to know where my students are instructionally. I'd love to see this grow, those reds continue to grow. So students are... I think you are on the wrong one. There you go. That's okay. So teachers are becoming more comfortable with the resource, and it's having a positive impact on their instruction. The next one, I can use data to address my instruction to meet student needs. Again, as they're becoming more comfortable with the resource, they are becoming more comfortable with using the data that it generates and then using that to drive their instruction. So that's more of like the qualitative data, more about how teachers are feeling using the resource. And so now, how is that impacting how students are growing? So that goal number 2 focuses on increasing writing proficiency using some of the rubrics at the end of some units that the teachers are choosing. The action steps identify when final writing assessment will occur in each grade level. They do that. They review the rubrics ahead of the unit so they know what's going to be expected of the students so they can backwards plan, and they have a really in-depth understanding of the areas to really focus on. Grade-level teams are compiling and organizing information. They send their rubrics to us for this purpose. And then Mrs. Pirik and I put them into a spreadsheet, and then we gather the data, and that'll be coming up in a couple of slides. Then it's compiled, we'll share it school-wide and discuss it at a staff meeting and what the implications are, where we really need to focus our instruction. And then we'll use that, we use that student data and feedback from the teams to reflect and evaluate on what our writing assessment process looks like. So just to give you just an overview, our kindergarteners are doing really well. This is report card data. They have two writing standards on the last report card. Threes are the highest, meaning that they, the standard is well-developed. Two means they're approaching, and one means that they're just beginning to develop that, the skill that's in that standard. So as you can see, kindergarten's doing really well. 96% of kindergarteners were meeting the standard. And then again, 96% of kindergarteners were meeting the second standard. So kindergarten is really great because it allows for drawing and dictating and writing, wherever they are at developmentally. At this age, it's really about organizing their thoughts so that when they become more proficient writers, they can effectively put it on paper. They have to understand how to organize their thoughts first before they can write it out. So really proud of kindergarten. Our teachers are rocking it. Those are our youngest learners, and they're doing a great job. First grade report card, the rest of the grade levels to have one writing standard. First grade, writing informative explanatory text in which they name the topic, supply some facts about the topic, and provide some sense of closure. Again, they're doing really well, too. 59% of the students have that standard well-developed. 27% are developing, so they're in a really great place. 14% of the students still need to continue to work on that standard. Second grade, they're working on, they worked on writing informative texts using facts and definitions gathered from sources. 64% of the students are doing really well with that, as well as 26% are growing and developing, and 10% of the students still continue, need to continue to work on that. Third grade report card, write informative text to examine a topic and convey ideas and information clearly. Third grade, just as we saw with Eureka, you can see where the students that are just, they're just entering into this scope and sequence. So the EL curriculum assumes that they've had what kindergarten and 1st grade and 2nd grade are getting now. So a majority of our students in 3rd grade are at the 2 level, which is a great place to be. Down the road, as this next trimester closes, we'll be looking for growth in showing more students that have solidly developed that skill. But in terms of where 3rd grade is, we are really happy with, you know, 82% are right there on that cusp. So kudos to all of the teachers for all of their hard work and all of the students. If you could be in a classroom and see the rich discussion and the vocabulary and the excitement that these kids have over this content, I mean, who could be so excited about frogs? It's amazing. How, they know so many facts about frogs. And it's really fun to be in the classroom and hear them like just learn and discover and be so passionate about it. So really proud of them. The next slide then talks about that rubric data. So where we are gathering that information and we get, and we compile it into a graph so that we can analyze it. This gives us two opportunities to look, or two opportunities to look at the data differently. This, you know, is a great representation of where our students are globally. But then when we break down by these different areas in the spreadsheet, teachers can look at individual students. They can see where those students are, if they're yellows, if they're twos across the board, if they're ones across the board. They can also look at it by these areas, comprehension, organization, and purpose, and evidence and elaboration, and see where their classrooms are doing as a whole. So if they're seeing a trend that maybe organization and purpose is an area that students are maybe at ones and twos, then they can really go back to whole-class instruction and then narrow their focus instructurally on those areas. So these spreadsheets are very empowering and very effective in helping teachers understand where their students are. So you can see kindergarten, again, their rubric data looks fabulous. Those tall towers, those are the threes, 1st grade. So kindergarten, I'm going to go back a slide. Kindergarten just submitted for Module 2. They did not do writing assessment in Module 1. They did not feel like they were in a great place with the resource, and our students were not quite ready for that, to use that data. They didn't feel like the students were, it would be true of where the students are instructionally. So we decided to wait until Module 2 to begin to gather that data, and then Module 3 and Module 4 will collect that data as well. But I can't argue with where our students are. They're doing a great job. 1st grade, you can see Module 1 is in the yellow and Module 2 is in the green. So you can see great progress in their writing skills. This is what we're looking for, is that progress. It's nice to see report card data because that's an end result, but this really shows our growth. our growth. And you can see where, you'll see less students in the ones on the left and more students, you know, growing and moving into the threes category where they're really solidly developed those skills. Same with second grade. Second grade is moving right along. They are also growing where we might see more, well, you begin to see that forward progression towards threes. Third grade mirrors, I think, third grade is very consistent with what we're seeing in their report card, which is great. This is what we want to see. But again, you're also seeing forward progression. So where in organization and purpose, the one in the middle, looks like they went down. You actually look at, in, in the twos, but you actually look at the threes and that number of students is growing. So that's what we want to see. And we really appreciate these graphs because it shows us where our students, how our students are growing. And that's it for me. Any questions?
So Mrs. Charlie, I think I understood when you said that the third graders, it was a lower amount, the majority of them were in the two category on the report card data. Or was it lower than that?
No, it was twos. It was like eighty-two percent were in the twos.
And the reason for that was because of the new curriculum? Or?
Well, it is reflective of the curriculum, yes. So it assumes, EL curriculum assumes that the students have the background knowledge and skills that EL teaches in kindergarten and first and second, in the way that, in the scope and kind of sequence of skills. And so for third graders, it's harder for them to be right where the curriculum wants them to be because they haven't gotten all of that background skills, probably fumbling over my words, if this makes any sense. But, but what we, well, that's what we saw in the beginning and now what we're seeing, that's why these graphs are so powerful, because that might be where they were in November. But when we look at these graphs and we see them growing and more students moving into the three category, we can see the positive impact that this resource is having on their growth in those skills.
Okay, I'm with you, I understand. Thank you for that. I guess my only other question would be, have you looked at the difference between the report card data now that we have the new ELA curriculum in the ELA standards? How that has changed from last year and prior years to this year? Have you noticed any?
Well, the, we didn't gather the data like this in years prior. So this is all new as a result of our, yeah, of our school improvement plan. So, and I have to say that I think with, in previous years that I've been here, Journeys has kind of, I don't know how to say this the right way. I think that we were realizing that that resource wasn't meeting our students' needs. So I think next year's is going to be really telling, you know, come back to me in a year and we'll talk about it. Because I think our teachers will be more accustomed to the resource, they'll have a whole year under their belt. Plus we'll have, and the second graders will have had a year of EL and then, you know, they'll be coming into third grade with more than our current third graders were coming in.
Right, and then you could compare that.
Yes, I think that would be, yeah, that would be probably a more accurate representation of, of how our students are doing.
I will add one more thing to that too, just for some background. The report card as it stood last year for reading looks a lot different than the report card this year. So at the end of last year, we had teacher teams come together and really analyze the assessments and the standards within each of the units that they would be instructing upon. And we, 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 we reworked, that's a tongue twister. We reworked the reporting standards on the report cards K through three to better align to the direction moving forward. So the standards you would see on the report card this year, there may be a few that matched in years prior. So it would be better for us to take a look this year to next year.
Yeah.
Yeah, so just so you know, like it's, it wouldn't be easy to just like go back and pull because the descriptors have, have changed. So it's a good question, but just so you know, like that's kind of the background of why we probably would not be able to do it to the level that you're looking for at this point, yeah. But, but it would be good.
It's a great question.
To see, you know, this year compared to next year when students have a year under their belt, you know, in the grade level. So, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All right.
Okay, at MIS, we had two writing goals. We had two writing goals. The first one had to do with utilizing the CER structure that junior high currently uses. We wanted to implement that into our math curriculum. These were our action steps that we put forward in our, you know, beginning of the year. And as you can see, they're all ongoing. Professional learning is taking place, you know, daily. We've got our instructional coaches we're utilizing. We've had staff from the junior high come over twice now. We pick their brains, they've given us suggestions. We've identified, you know, the prompts we want to use. We're instructing the students. One thing that's kind of interesting about this is you, you can't have the kids write every day. I mean, you can, but not to the level of a full CER. So instead of writing a full CER, they talk orally about, you know, what is the claim here in this problem? So they'll talk about it, you know, verbally. So it'll be just conversations instead of writing. So our teachers do, we have eighty percent of our fourth grade math team here and, you know, you'll see their data in a few minutes. They've done a tremendous job. But, you know, just talking about it in addition to writing it is, is really seeming to help our kiddos. They co-construct, you know, exemplar responses. The feedback is tremendous. You know, our teachers take a lot of time giving the students feedback on their, their writing. They don't just go through it as a class. They comment on the papers, they discuss it with the kiddos. And without that feedback, I don't think we'd be where we are after our second round of data collection. Teachers collaboratively, collaboratively evaluate student work. That was a great conversation. You know, I was in the room when they were doing it and I just sat back and watched. I was just proud of how everybody was really, you know, voicing their opinion and trying to explain and picking the brains of each other. And it was just really a very positive, for an administrator, for the boss, I thought it was just very cool. I didn't say a word, I just sat back and watched and, and just smiled the whole time. And then we are collecting data for math. We just collected our second rounds of data, which we're going to see next. This is our schoolwide data. The blue is from the first data collection, the red is the second data collection. It's a scale of zero to three. So you can see the reds, we've gone up in every category. The, the smallest growth would be in the reasoning category. And I think that is the most challenging, we also got that from the junior high. You know, their math teachers were saying that's, that's where their students are having the most challenges as well. But as, as Mike has always said, this is more a thinking strategy as, as opposed to a writing strategy. So it's just getting the kiddos to think about, you know, what's happening in their head and think and reason how they can go about solving the problems. The next one, this is our fourth grade data. And as I said before, thank you to our fourth grade math team. They did tremendous. Eighty percent of the math team is here, so good job to them. Way to go, Mrs. Culturey. But you can see the red grew in each category. You know, they practice it, they discuss it, and they've done a tremendous job. Our fifth grade data looks a little different and I can tell you why. Our fifth grade teachers, at my urging, were a little ambitious. This second round of data collection, their problem was much more involved. So the problem that they had the students respond to was a much more challenging problem. So the students, they had more difficulties with it. And, and it, it shows with, you know, the CER scores. But the students are still growing, you know, they have to be exposed to these more rigorous problems in order to grow from it. So they did the problem, they got the feedback, and they're growing because of it. And we learned something as well. You know, when the junior high came over just last week at our early dismissal day, you know, their comment was, don't give them a problem where the math is the hardest parts. You have the single button mic? So the fifth grade data, this was from our fall data collection. Again, you can see lots of green in the claim and the evidence and in the reasoning. Again, the yellow was the biggest category and, and that's approaching. So the yellow is not gold, whatever color you want to call it, that's not a bad thing. That means they're approaching that standard. So, you know, that's, they're on the road to making it to that next level. And then because of the more challenging problem that was presented, you know, you're going to see a little bit different colors on that, that winter one. The one that I do want to point out, however, if you look at the reasoning, the two circle graphs for reasoning, they're pretty much identical. So even though the problem was more challenging, our kiddos were able to start thinking through it. So they were able to, you know, think through the problem and provide their, their explanation for it. Even though they may not have been able to do the math one-hundred percent correctly, they're starting to think through the logical problem. Our second goal had to do with utilizing EL education, writing in EL education. So we've got our action steps, professional learning, you know, that's ongoing. We've got our, our instructional coaches, we've got our weekly meetings, you know, every early dismissal day, we're working on EL education, teaching the writing process. And it's a lot. EL education writes so much. It's, it's almost, you know, they, they co-write with a partner, they co-write in small groups, they co-write as a, as a full class. They're constantly writing something. And it, it's really neat because it builds on it. You know, what they will use and, for example, in lesson two, we brought back in lesson five, they have to use that information and build upon what they've already done. They have identified writing opportunities. We have taken, we're doing one data collection per module. Our modules will take a little bit longer, so we've got one data collection. We're currently working on getting data for the second module, which we should have very soon. Model exemplar responses, they're doing that as a class. Provide feedback for students, which is, this is another neat, when it's built in to EL education where the kids, you know, they help each other, they, they kind of help guide each other, the teachers are giving all kinds of feedback. There are so many checklists and charts and rubrics floating out there. It's great feedback for our kiddos. Teachers collect and collaboratively evaluate student work is ongoing. And then we've got our data on the next couple of slides. So this is our fourth grade, they did an informative writing piece. All the verbiage on the left up there, that's kind of explaining, there's three categories that we're looking at with every EL writing opportunity. You know, there's either reading connection or comprehension. So the first piece has to do with reading, either connecting to the piece or, you know, understanding the piece. Then you've got organization and purpose, and then you've got evidence and elaboration. So even though they're writing in different genres, informative, opinion or narrative, we still have these same basic terms, these same basic categories, so we can have these conversations with our students, even though they're technically weren't linked to different standards. We're still using the same terminology. So as you can see, for our informative writing, you know, the comprehension was good, the organization, evidence and evaluation. So that would be the area that we're going to work on for our next, our next big writing piece. So this is, you know, something that our teachers are going to look at, they're going to figure out, you know, where do we want to go from here? How do we solve this problem? How do we not solve the, how do we overcome this, this hurdle? And then for our fifth grade, they did a narrative piece for their first module. I think narrative's a little bit easier for the kiddos. You're, you know, you're, you're writing a story. For the fifth grade, they wrote a story, it was from one of the characters' perspectives from the, the novel that they've read, but it's still a lot of their own thoughts, you know. So I think that's a little bit easier than an informative piece. So they, you know, they scored very well. You know, ninety-seven percent on their reading connection, eighty-six percent on organization and purpose and the development and elaboration, they did a great job as well. But again, we're taking these three categories and those are the things that we're going to work on as we progress towards the next writing piece that we're working on. And I believe that is all that I have. Any questions for me?
I don't know, my microphone is working. Lincoln? Oh, okay. Okay, thank you. So for the CER data point, where, what test is that coming from?
It's not a test, it's an actual writing piece where they're, they're rating it on a rubric.
That the teachers are grading?
Yes, yep, yep. And we're using the exact same one as the junior high uses. So it's consistent, four through eight.
So none of the data is coming from testing per se?
Correct, correct.
Got it.
Yep, it's all writing samples.
So how does the, how does the change in the ELA curriculum this year affect what you're doing at MIS? Or what have you seen as far as like the writing and the, I mean, is there, that all works together, right?
We are doing much more, last year we implemented a writing, more writing across all grade levels, all content areas. This year, EL, there is even more writing. And I teach, I think our teachers can attest to that. They're writing so much more and there's more rubrics and it's more of a sequential steps. You know, they're doing this piece, so they're working on the, the introduction, then they're working on the body progress and they're forming these expert teams, so they're helping each other. So it's a much more thorough writing curriculum than we've had in the past.
Right, you were just getting a head start last year in a, in a way. Okay, got it. Thank you.
All right, I think it's my turn. So you've heard a lot about CER already. I don't feel like I need to explain that again. We're in year three of our, our implementation. So year one, we, we're trying to do this cycle at the junior high and I think we're all kind of doing something similar, where the first year we, we investigate, learn about it, the second year we experiment, we, we refine it, and year three is full implementation. So across all of our curriculum at the junior high, we are doing CER writing. They're doing other kinds of writing as well, but that's kind of our focus. And as Dave just mentioned, we really talk about it as a thought process. It's, it's really, we want kids to think in that, in that mode. So we took our initial benchmark assessments in September as, to see where are we, how did we do? And then we took our second benchmark assessment in December. One, one thing we found out in September is that, again, thank you to what's coming up, coming up below me at the, at the other two buildings, they've been, started working on writing and writing skills and ELA skills. So it's starting to trickle up. I know sixth grade was pleasantly surprised with how well the students were able to have some writing skills. And then based on what we did to the previous couple of years, our kids came in a little higher than we expected in September. So like what Dave is saying, we keep adjusting. It's, it's data driving instruction. That's what we're supposed to be doing. When you make it a little bit harder and a little bit harder, because we don't want to just have good data, we want to have the kids learn and grow based on that data. So sometimes it goes up and down and that's okay. It's not, it, it's not a standardized test, it's our stuff. And we want to link it eventually to standardized tests that everything that, that MIS and MES are doing and us should- to standardized tests that everything that MIS and MES are doing and us should eventually result in students attaining the standards at a higher level. So, if we want to go to the next slide, we have our, that's our, this isn't a pie chart, obviously. This is just the raw data that came, came out. The, you see the September data and our December data and if I, all of the scores, the abilities, the, the scores on the rubrics went up except for one area in eighth grade and that's claim. But what you have to know is that at each grade level, they, again, they tweaked it up, we turned it up a notch, we made it a little bit harder and eighth grade made theirs the most challenging. So, what we're trying, what we tried to do this year is the beginning of the year, use our end of the year rubric. What do we expect them to do by the end of the year? So, we wanted, we expected them not to do well on the first one because we haven't taught them all that stuff yet. Eighth grade took it a little bit step further and made it even harder than we originally had planned. So, that's why those scores aren't quite as high as they were. If you look, if you go back to last year's presentation at this time, they're not quite as high, it's because we just made it harder, you know? And then we want them to score by the end of the year, we want them to score the upper two, 2.5, 2.7, if, you know, the dream would be a three. So, you can see that here, we grew in every area except one, but, and I think that's pretty good. If you go to the next slide, so this is our sixth grade, this is our current data. I didn't put the comparison, but again, it's just like the data you saw from MIS, green is good, the orange or gold is approaching, meaning that they're almost getting there and then the red is the areas where we struggle a little bit. So, at this point, 40%, 46% in the green and claim and evidence, almost as strong, but as you can see echoing exactly again what, what Dave just mentioned in MIS, reasoning, it's the hardest one. Kids getting, it's an abstract thought. Our kids are just really developing that ability to have that abstract thought. So, it gets a little bit harder for them to come up with those reasons. You probably know from your own children or maybe your spouse, I don't know. Getting that reason, the reason is the hard part, okay? I just did it. Seventh grade looked really good, seventh grade, seventh grade looks really good. We, we, they're going to have to tweak it a little bit harder to make it, make it a little bit more challenging, especially in the, the claim and the evidence part. Again, reasoning lagged behind just a little bit. And then you see our eighth grade, they made it a little bit harder. We, we're asking for things like multiple claims, multiple reasons, multiple evidence, going back, we just keep, like I said, we keep raising the bar with our expectations. By the time we get through that, that state testing in the end of the year, they're going to be able to meet all of those, those scores. All right, so that's, that's the CER stuff. So, we're just, we're just continuing it. This, the idea is that after this year, it just becomes part of the curriculum and we don't have to make it a school improvement goal. We'll probably still test for it and still look for the data, but it's probably not going to be a school improvement goal. It just becomes part of the culture of what we do. So, and then we'll work on some other writing, writing like narrative, different kinds of writing skills as well. We do that now, but we're going to beef it up next year. So, the second thing, we, our second goal we have is building a more positive school community. Based on the Five Essential Survey and some internal data that we collected, we had just this feeling that we needed to build our, our community a little bit stronger. So, I shared with you before about our, it's our tier one behavior team, but they call themselves the Positive Impact Team. They just trying to come up with more and more activities for our kids to be connected to the school. So, some of you may have seen things online, some of our different activities, the, the Pink Out, the Barbie Night was a lot of fun. You know, we have, that's a combination of our, our team and our booster organizations, trying to just get as many kids there and having a good time at school. The Grinch Night was, was a big blast, we had two Grinches, it was awesome. The Honor Flight fundraiser was part of this too. You know, as a district, we worked together and, and raised over $4,000. So, it's pretty amazing and to see those Veterans Day things, it just brings the kids involved. We've had several School Spirit Weeks, the Faculty Appreciation Night, where I think some of your first grade team won awards, won prizes, things like that. So, thank you for, we invite everybody. And then it's just the reimagining of our social community to try and get everybody more connected to the school. So, we don't have like hard data on all that, but we've got a lot more kids doing a lot of more exciting things. So, that'll continue. And then our last goal, we're in that learning's part of this goal, that we just brought this up, I shared with the beginning, the metacognition. So, we just started our book study in December. So, we're in year one of trying to learn this, that, that's the book that we're reading, it's called Teaching Students to Drive Their Brains. So, what we're trying to do is teach the teachers how this works first. It's thinking about thinking and, and you know, if you think about it yourself, when you really engage in something and you think about how you're going to process that, you're going to do better. So, we, we've heard from MES about the executive functioning. This is a big part of executing functioning, thinking about what you're going to do in the future. So, this is, we want to teach the kids to drive their brains, that's, that's kind of the whole idea. So, we kind of jigsawed this one. So, what we're doing in the Metacognition Book Study is chapter one was, we, one and two we did on December 6th and Mr. Munch, myself and Stacy, our instructional coach, we worked together to model and say, this is what we want you to do. So, we presented to the staff and we, we talked to them, we gave an activity, the psych social workers and the speech path, they did chapter two and that was Metacognition and Learning Brain. And then we just had January 10th, our sixth grade team presented on Practical Optimism to Improve Motivation and Productivity. So, as we go through the rest of the year, we'll continue to learn these things. With each chapter, we give our teachers a lesson that they can bring, take to their classroom, ideas to take to their classroom, to try to build on what you just learned in that activity or in that chapter for the next month in your classroom, so you start to incorporate and experiment a little bit with Metacognition. So, those are our, our three that we're doing right now. So, any questions for me?
Not a question, but a comment. I really, I really liked that second goal that you, you added there, that building community really is, is a great part of why the district overall is so strong. So, I appreciate that one.
Yeah, I was going to say it later, but to echo or kind of go along with what you're saying, you never really leave District 159. It's kind of like Hotel California, you just never leave. Okay, so I tell the kids every year at graduation, your next gown might be a different color, but you'll always be green underneath. So, they're always taking those lessons with them. All the things that all three of us are leading at the schools and the teachers are making a part of, it's part of 159 and the reason the Lincoln Way Central is the way it is and it's strong as it is, is a big chunk of it comes from right here in, in Mokena. All right.
I just want to make a couple of comments too. So, I, I agree with Julie, I really like the, not, goal number two, I think that's a fine goal and I like how you are identifying things from their report card or the culture, what do they call that?
The Five Essentials.
Yeah, Five Essentials. And then the, I, this one as well, I think this is, you know, thinking out of the box, I can appreciate that and then, you know, getting all, everybody kind of towards the same, you know, mission and sharing in the, in the study, I think is, is just really wonderful. I'm, I'm interested to read the book now myself, I got two books out of this meeting to read. And of course, the first one, I appreciate how you are, I mean, if, if everybody's killing it, then we got it, you know, that's what needs to happen is those expectations need to rise. So, I can appreciate that you are doing that and yeah, we're, we're, we're showing progress, but we're not, you know, there yet. So, that's always a good place to be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. All right, moving on then, Superintendent's Report, Dr. Cohen.
Well, I'd like to start by thanking all of our staff for their effort over the last couple of days with the tough weather, the teachers who pivoted. Sorry about the 6:30, 7 o'clock pull, but I, the one thing I will tell you is you hate to be wrong. You hate to call school at 3:00 in the afternoon and then have the storm fizzle. You get a lot of side eyes down, they walk down the aisle of Burkotts after that. So, as you might imagine, but I, but I do appreciate it. I want to thank the parents also for supporting their students at home. We have some of our youngest learners, this was their first time doing any sort of remote or e-learning because they weren't in school, if you were at, were a kindergarten or a first grader. And so, that's, that's, all that effort is appreciated. I also want to give a special shout out to our maintenance department. I was here that Saturday, well, Friday and Saturday. We have folks out here clearing parking lots, salting, checking up on our boiler systems. We did have a couple little small issues where, you know, a couple little cracks here and there and, but nothing, nothing of significance that disrupted our operations. And also our transportation department as well, for getting here early today and making sure our bus is checked out and we're ready to roll. These storms are not, not a lot of fun to deal with, but it certainly is, everybody's flexibility is appreciated. The only thing I want to bring, bring up is you have two school calendars for the board to consider. They are very similar with only a couple of differences. Things that are similar, you notice the start date for teachers, the work year is, begins August 19th with students returning on August 21st. That is five days later, pushed back one week, but advanced two days because of the leap year. We do have to come back after Memorial Day for four days, but we still finish before the end of May. Our spring break and winter break both align with the high school. All holidays which are called for through our MCSA contract are included in red where the offices will be closed. The difference is in the month of, months of October and November. Last year we had, and every other year since 2020, we've been required to have the election day as a school holiday and offices must be closed. In parts of the state where schools are the basically only place you can have a polling place and with Mokena Junior High has hosted polling places in the past, that's, that's been something that's been passed down from the State General Assembly. And so, creates this awkward day right before it. So, in calendar option A, you'll see we use that day off, or we, we have that day off for students and we have that as parent teacher conferences. We are in session on the 25th and 26th of November, that Monday, Tuesday prior to Thanksgiving. This calendar follows Lincoln Way a little bit more closely. Lincoln Way does not do parent teacher conferences, but they are in session on the 25th and 26th. They also have students in session on the 4th. Calendar B switches it around just a little bit. It does create a day of student attendance on November 4th, so we, that week is somewhat interrupted. We'd be in school, out of school and then back in school on the 6th. But then that week of November 25th through 29th, the entire week would be non-attendance for students. The 25th would be our institute day and the 26th would be parent teacher conferences that would allow families that so chose to, to, you know, travel if they wanted to for the Thanksgiving holiday and take advantage of the fact that we offer virtual conferences in the mornings on the parent teacher conference day, or I should say in the early afternoons. Other than that, the calendars are similar. Entertain any questions, we'll be asked to, I'll be asking to approve one of these to next month.
Any questions, Dr. Cohen?
So, Dr. Cohen, the, this year we did similar to option B, is that right? This school year?
Yes, yes, we did, because we didn't have that election day to, to, to take off and Veterans Day fell on a weekend, so we could move that day anywhere we wanted, that, that day off. And so, we moved the recognition of Veterans Day to the 26th. In this calendar, the recognition of Veterans Day is being tied to the election day.
Got it. So, I'm curious if you, because I, I think the parent teacher conferences is kind of a big, you know, difference between the two versions. Did we hear any feedback from principals or parents on two things? One, the timing of the parent teacher conferences and two, if we do choose again to make it the week of Thanksgiving, there's pros and cons, I can see that, but you know, were, were virtual conferences for those families that would have been traveling maybe? Was there any feedback on the, that medium being used for conferences? Is, is it being received well? Yes, people enjoy that.
And the, the, the second option, option B allows us to schedule conferences after the conclusion of the trimester here. Although with option A is that the conferences would have to take, take place prior to the end of the first trimester. And so, one of the reasons for billing option B was, and this is something new, one of the reasons for billing option B was to incorporate that parent teacher conference day later so that those grades could be completed. In the past, there has been some discussion about creating too many chopped up weeks where, you know, now granted, you know, the week of October 7th through 11th is now a full week and the week of November 24th through the 8th is now four days with a day in the middle. So, it's kind of a, it is a, it is a choice. Leaning more towards option B, the one thing of note for the middle, for the intermediate and junior high is that the semester does not end until the second week in January, only because we find it almost impossible to balance out the days starting a little bit later.
Have you gotten any feedback on the timing of it, setting aside all those other factors? But having parent teacher conferences three weeks later, as far as receiving feedback from the teachers, especially if, if students are struggling or, or anything of that nature? Have you gotten any feedback at earlier is better, later is better, doesn't matter?
Our discussion has been if a student is struggling, we probably shouldn't wait until November maybe to reach out. And that's why we have those grade level team meetings, so we can identify students who are struggling and to get a, you know, address that a little bit earlier. It is, you know, the parent teacher conferences are a checkpoint, but it shouldn't be the only checkpoint. So, if we see somebody that's struggling early on, we wouldn't want to wait until the, you know, fourth month. So, we, we, we would try and address that or even earlier.
I, I understand our point
Yeah.
of view, but have you gotten any feedback from families or anything like that? Nothing to, to suggest that there's any issue with having it later? Okay.
I haven't heard any feedback of that of that sort.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I just have a quick question. Do we, you know, between option A and B, do we know if the staff or admin team has any preference on which one or have we gotten any feedback?
Rachel's clearly in Camp B. I think much of the staff here is in the Camp B camp as well. We've kicked around the calendar, but I haven't heard any strong opinions one way or the other. Start date and the end date are fixed, it's really just those couple of days in between. You have any opinions either, tell me what you think. Debbie? There you go.
Any As out there, any? Okay, good to know, thank you.
Well, both of them have the same start date, end date and breaks. Lincoln Way will be in session on the 25th and 26th of November. So, but, I mean, it is what it is. It's going to be impossible to be perfectly aligned with them. Yeah.
Well, one other thing I've heard in the past is parents thinking it may be beneficial to have conferences a little bit later, you know, in the year where there's more under the belt kind of thing and, and teachers getting to know the students. So, I think option B would, would address that a little bit too.
Sounds like option B is going to be on the agenda for February.
I don't know, I think Rachel said A.
That concludes my report. Oh boy, you poked a bear.
Sorry. No, I, for years, you know, we, ever since I've been here, we've been on trimesters and the other schools are on quarters and semesters. When we have parent teacher conferences earlier, we have not had a report card yet. So, parents haven't had the benefit of seeing how their students are progressing or to really, I guess, get a, probably a good feel for, for how they're doing. So, for MES, it's, it's beneficial for us because report cards have already come home, parents have an opportunity to see how their students are doing and to bring that to the conference and give them more, I think it just better prepares them for conferences. It kind of gives them an opportunity to formulate their questions ahead of time, they know what to ask, whereas before, they really, they didn't have questions really. Not to say they didn't have questions, but it just give them an opportunity to ask more informed questions. So, it, we're in an advantage if we have it that later week in Thanksgiving, calendar B for that reason. So, it's, has nothing to do with Thanksgiving, it's just really the timing of when the report cards come out for us. But I understand the, you know, the position it puts them in as well, so. Thank you.
When we talked about this in our admin meeting, I think Dave and I are on the same page is we don't, if there's a kid who's struggling, we're not going to wait until parent conference time.
Hundred percent. I was waiting for one year.
Yeah, so if the Yeah. So if the kid is struggling or if a parent has a question, they ask us. There's no shyness about this. So, I mean, they're going to, they're going to get to us long before that happens. So the conferences are important and I think that they're good that we have them. If it's going to benefit the elementary school to do it a little bit later, I don't think it bothers us at all. So, because like I said, we have team meetings, we have conferences, we have parents in all the time. So it's just a, it's another check. It's, like you said, it's another part of the school year. So if it's going to benefit what they do at the elementary school, I think that MES and, or MIS and MJH are all for it. You can pay me later.
Okay. Any other questions for Dr. Cohen? Okay, Dr. Johnson?
Good evening. My January board report, as always, I provided a summary of the professional learning that took place during the month of January. In addition, I provided a small update on where we were with the strategical 1C in terms of advanced learner programming. Dr. Cohen and I met virtually yesterday with Northwestern Center for Talent Development to do a little more detailed of a timeline, which I will share once I have a chance to get that typed up and ready for you. I'll pass that off to Dr. Cohen so he can share that with you. So you can kind of see month by month what the plan will look like from here till the end of the school year. I provided a summary of the winter fast bridge data for you, as well as a celebration regarding the library grant that the school district received this past month. In addition, I did send out a staff survey today regarding the e-learning day. As Kelly mentioned earlier, our e-learning plan is actually up at the end of the year to be renewed by you, the Board of Education, as well as then sent off to the Regional Office of Education. That happens every three years. So now was the perfect time to gather all of our staff input and feedback regarding the day. I had 61 people already responded. I didn't ask for it to be due till next week. So that was great to see. And I can't imagine it'll change tons, but I did ask, just wanted to give you a quick little update. One of the questions I asked was asking the staff how their overall experience went with the most recent e-learning days. 95.1% of our staff rated the day either a four or five, five being excellent. We had 5% of our, the remaining 5% rated it a three. And then I did also ask the staff, again, this was not all staff, the 61 who responded in eight hours, how they felt the district's e-learning plan was overall, now that they've had the opportunity to live through it for three years. 98.4% of staff rated it a four or five and 1.6% of staff rated it a three. So overall, when I imagine us coming back together, our e-learning committee coming back together in the spring, I don't envision major overhauls, but really some refinements based on the feedback that we've received from our staff. In addition, I'm working on a family survey that will go out to parents as well, with some general questions about their perspective at home and how things went on the early e-learning days. So our committee will have both sets of data, staff data as well as family data, to be able to go ahead and have some informed decision-making and any refinements that our plan would need. So that will come to you later this year, either the very end of the school year or that June board meeting. So we can begin the process of renewing that plan for the next three years, starting next year. Any questions?
Questions for Dr. Johnson? Okay, hearing, hearing none. Okay. Mrs. Volby?
Thank you. So the majority of my board report was kind of an update in terms of human resource projects that we've been working on in terms of hosting, identifying and onboarding staff. We joined, or welcomed our new certified school nurse for the remainder of this year and onboarded her. Have been able to find an occupational therapist, working on a school psych for a, a recent maternity leave. And we were able to hold interviews and identify a candidate that is coming to the board this evening to replace Lou, who will be retiring at the end of the year. Our next focus will be on interviewing for the director position and as well as really meeting with each of the departments and the building administrators and teachers to look at staffing levels and, and kind of continuums of service for the upcoming school year. And we offered some professional development in January on executive functioning for certified and non-certified staff. And we'll be doing a medical update for our staff and the early release date in February. That's all I have for now.
Any questions for Mrs. Volby? Okay. All right. Next up, Dr. Shaw.
Thank you. In my report, we've got a few action items and an information item. The action items we've got tonight are the approval of the bids for the front door replacement, the MES parking lot expansion, the MIS hard surface area, play area, and then the RFP for the electrical work that we'll do over the summer. We anticipate that cost to be right around the $50,000 mark. So we'll issue an RFP for that work. Information item for consideration for next month is for buying the two buses whose leases are up this year. We, taking a look at, at purchasing again, how we purchase those, we'll have more information for you. Interest rates, we've, we've really received a lot of interest rate as interest rates have raised. When we looked at buying the buses last year and looking at lease versus purchase this year, one of my directives has always been, we don't like to pay interest. And so if we have the ability to buy, buy. And in an environment where interest rates are really high, not receive, but also pay out, the recommendation would be to buy the two buses that are up this year from the vendor that we've utilized for purchasing our last four buses, which is the IC bus as opposed to the Bluebirds, which we have six of the Bluebird buses that we put in our fleet last year. So that'll be coming up next month. I also had our food service director, Ann, highlighted the cinnamon roll meal. So you have that in front of you and the information, the nutrition information is attached to the board pack. And the, there is a PDF on information on financial insights that was part of my report this month that will be a recurring report. And the intent is to put that report on the business office website, which will, part of that just increasing transparency in the finance and business department. So it'll be attached to my board report and then put on our website.
Okay. Questions for Dr. Shaw? I have one question for you, but it's not necessarily to get answered tonight. But so next month, if the recommendation is to purchase the two buses, I'd just be curious to see what the contingency plan is if the company can't deliver the buses in time. Cause I know that's a concern as far as being able to deliver it. So again, not, not for tonight, but just
I do know though.
Okay. All right. Well.
So what their, their concern was about was a, a brand new bus. So the two buses that we're looking at are buses that are being returned, that are one-year-old buses with less than 20,000 miles on them. We would receive the full five-year warranty. They're new to us, so we'd still be able to depreciate over the course of five years. And they have those buses. So we know that we'll be able to get those two buses, the one-year-old buses. There's still 2024s, but they're considered one-year-old.
Okay. Wow. Very good. Look at that showing off. Got it done early.
I just had a, a couple of comments, I guess. Thank you to Dr. Shaw and Dr. Cohen for sitting with me this morning to go through those new slides that you're going to have and, and put on the, the website. I encourage everyone to, to take a look if, if, you know, it's, it's a great, I had to have Dr. Shaw walk me through to, to kind of connect some pieces there. But I, I think it's a great idea to put this transparency that you can watch exactly how the, the money is being used. You know, so that was a, a great addition. So I appreciate that. I also appreciate the additional information you pointed out about the buses that, that helped me support the purchase of the buses over the leasing option. So again, thank you for the additional information. And the last, you, you provided a lot of great information before I came onto the board about the playground and how that has changed since it first came to the board. So after seeing that additional information, that also helped. So thank you very much.
Any other questions for Dr. Shaw?
Uh, Dr. Shaw, I
Yes.
I thought you were saying
Oh.
For your time today, you're helpful. And I agree. You, you slides that you're gonna, reports that you're going to put from frontline education, I think will be helpful for our public to see on the transparency page. I appreciate that. And I think the takeaway is, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the, the percentage of budget that is on these slides for the people that might look is a percentage of that line item on the budget, not the total budget, right?
Correct. Yeah.
Okay. So I think that's, that was the main confusing part for me. So hopefully anybody listening, that'll be helpful for them. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Dr. Shaw. What's up, Mr. Henson?
Hi, good evening. I just had a, two items on my agenda. I highlighted a little bit of the work the tech department did over the winter break. Special thanks out, special thanks to Mr. Raino over there for lending us a few of his workers to help us pull some network cable in some key locations that needed it. And the second item was a information about the laptop refresh. We sent out a survey to our certified staff and administrators. Hundred and one responses, the top three requested items were longer battery life, touchscreen, and the speed of the laptop. And I accompanied the graph or the results of the survey on the next page. And that is all I had on my agenda this evening. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Henson?
I don't have any questions, but I'd just like to congratulate the whole tech team. You know, anytime you do e-learning, you know, it's a lot on the teachers to get done. But, you know, I didn't hear of any issues with, you know, any of the technology that went. I know at my work, there, there was issues with people getting logged in and they had to go to remote VPN access and they had, they're on Plan 1C, I think. So I didn't hear anything of that. So I think that's, you know, good for the tech team that we can pull that off for two straight days without any issues.
Okay. Next up is proofable reports. So everybody left Mr. McAdie hanging last month. He was the only show at the meeting. So I'm not sure if that means that he should go first or he gets to go last, because he can just say whatever they said, but, because I've been told that it, it's best to go last. So you can just say, you know, yeah, there we go. All righty. Thanks, Mike, for volunteering.
I let you use my building last time, so I figured I'd get off on that one. And I have a scar is the reason I wasn't there. So, I know. All right. I really don't have a lot to add to mine, I, my report. I did have in there that I would share with you the results, the geography B, but we didn't have it because we didn't have school that day. So the geography B will be this Friday. It's actually kind of a good thing because one of our students was out with COVID, one of our finalists. So he wasn't going to be able to participate and now he can. So all 10 will be there. If you've never, you're, you're all invited to come. Well, I can't, it's, it's for you. If you guys want to come, you can. I'll let, see if David lets you out. But it's a fun event. It's exciting to have an academic event, to have that, that much enthusiasm, that the kids really get into it, make signs for their friends, cheer for their friends for getting academic answers correct. So I will report that to you at the next board meeting, who the, our geography B champions are. And I also want to continue to shout to my history department because National Geographic did this for years. During the pandemic, they gave up on it. And our teachers just said, no, we're not doing that. It's such a good event. We're doing it ourselves. So thank you to the, my history department for continuing to keep that going. I want to thank the, my music department, I think, all the music department for the, the assemblies on the last day and our concert that week before. There've been, you know, they, they had some challenges to overcome, but really did a great job. And especially to the, you know, Ms. Snyder was sick that, the day of the, the assemblies. Rest of the music department just stepped up and took care of things. And I want to say a special thank you to Jenna N. So she's our social worker, but she's played viola for most of her life. So she helped out with getting the kids' instruments ready and everything like that. So I think it's just an example of what our staff will do when, when pressed to say, hey, we've got this challenge and we're going to meet it. So thank you to everybody for that. I think it was a fun event for the elementary school kids too. I don't know if, I don't know if Luke did the wave like I used to do, but I think he got them nice and riled up and sent them back here to the, to the, to the schools to have their parties. And then my last thing is, I'd like to welcome Matthew Geller. He's our new project lead the way teacher that you hired last month and he started right as we came back. And thank you to Dr. Johnson for getting him his training or getting him signed up for his training. He's a brand new ISU grad, go Redbirds. So he's, he started, he's, he's as green as they come, but boys, he, he's ready to go. So he's doing a really nice job. And Nancy Miller, who you met last time, did a great job, stepped in. We want to thank her for stepping in for that whole first semester and doing a fantastic job in that, in that, it's kind of a tough thing to step into, special training, a really difficult program to learn initially, but they did a great job and they're transitioning out. Nancy's done this week and Matthew will just take over. So that's all I have. You have, you guys have any questions?
Questions for?
I'll just say as a comment, I, I want to just say how much I enjoyed that concert. It was my first one and it was really great. And I liked how, you know, you gave the younger kids the opportunity to come into the, you know, the big school and the big kids. And they did a fine job. I know, I know, I think Dr. Cohen said it didn't happen last year because the last day was a snow day or remote day. So sorry you weren't, you had to miss it again, but it was, I thought, I thought it was great. Uh, I forgot my train of thought. I was going to say another thing, but anyway, I'll leave it at that. That's good.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Pass it on down?
Um, nothing new to add. I do have a couple of thanks. I do want to thank the junior high for that concert the last day. It was, it was a ton of fun and Luke did a great job. My, I do have a bone to pick though. I was in the middle of my solo of the 12 days of Christmas when Santa Claus showed up. So he grabbed the mic out of my hand, swear to God. So I had to stop singing. Of course, I had to give the floor to Santa. But, um, so thank you for that. It was a wonderful performance. Speaking of tech, Doug Ellsworth, who is our, the tech at our building at MIS, did a phenomenal job. We had a couple of teachers who were having some issues getting logged in on Fri-, I don't know if it was Friday or Tuesday, but he, you know, he called them. He reached out to them. He got everything settled. Everything was working. So thank you to Lincoln and thank you to his staff. They did a phenomenal job. And speaking of that, thanks to our teachers. You know, I popped in, I got into every classroom and it was like nothing, you know, they were just continuing on like we did a couple of years ago. It brought me a little PTSD, I think. But, you know, they just phenomenal. The kids were working, they had breakout rooms. It was just a great experience. So thank you to all of our teachers for everything that they have done. That's all I've got. Any questions for me?
Questions for Mr. McAdie? Okay.
I have nothing additional to report except that we are, as Dr. Lucas Niehay had mentioned, we are moving our GLDA's to next week. So that's our grade level data review meetings. So because of the pan, the pandemic, oh my God, it is PTSD because of remote learning. Oh my goodness. I want to also update you actually, the Kids' Heart Challenge. Mr. H said today we've raised $23,000 so far, which is the amount that we raised in total my first year here. So we're already up to $23,000. I mean, it's just amazing, phenomenal. So proud of our kids and Mr. H and Ms. Legrand, Ms. Clifford. Ms. Clifford, Mr. Murray do a great job with it. So keep going, Mokina. Want to say thank you to Dr. Lucas Nihey, and the fact that she goes, she attends this national conference every year, and it's because of her attention, her attendance at this national conference. She brings back such amazing information. But not only does she do that, she acts on it. So the executive functioning group that she runs, this is year two, so she's reached now 20 teachers at MES, working on developing those skills and organizational skills in our youngest learners, hopefully to have a positive impact down the road as they get older. But she makes it actionable. She brings book ideas back towards for us. We have great rich conversations, and we're able to make some improvements on the way we do things at MES. So we're very fortunate, and no MIS cannot have her. She is ours. Ms. Coltry, if she's still here. Okay. And so kudos to Dr. Lucas Nihey. Our teachers agree. Amazing job with e-learning. So proud. And I what was so great is I had parents reaching out, telling me how great our teachers are. So they don't understand how they do it. How do they keep all those kids engaged online? And they get to hear the teachers and the way our wonderful teachers interact with the kids. And so they did a great job, as always. And when I asked them how it went, and Mrs. Barr, in particular, she was like, it's fine. Like, it was fine. We've got this, right? We've got this. So great job to them. But of course, thank you to the parents, too, because if the parents aren't helping and supporting at home, our teachers can't do what they need to do. So thank you to all the parents. And finally, I want to say thank you to Dave Reyna, because I'm going to tell you, this guy works so hard, and he is everywhere. And if something cracks or leaks or drips, like, he is on it. He is so responsive. He is right where he needs to be as soon as he possibly can. He never leaves a text unanswered. Dave is a real asset to the district, and I just appreciate all he does for our building. So thank you, Dave. Okay, that's it. That's all I have.
Okay, any questions for Mrs. Trolley? Okay, next up, we'll go to Ms. Briscoe on Lincoln Way Area Special Education.
Well, seeing that my board meetings for April 3 are usually the week after our board meetings, I have nothing to report, because last month I had it the day before our board meeting. But just one thing, their HVAC unit at Pioneer Grove went out, of course. They had some issue. Luckily, the kids were out of school. So they were able to get it fixed at a low cost of $10,000, $776. But it's fixed while the kids are out of school. It's done. So that's it.
Any questions for Mrs. Briscoe? Okay, we had a couple of FOIA requests that got completed. Next up is action items. We'll start with approval of the previous minutes.
I move to approve minutes from the December 20.
2023 regular session and closed session meetings as presented.
Second by Ms. Briscoe. Any discussion? Kathy, please call a vote.
Mr. Andreessen?
Yes.
Mrs. Briscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. McMillan?
Yes.
Mrs. Oost?
Yes.
Mrs. Tunny?
Yes.
Mrs. Zalinski?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. Next up is the district bills with Mrs. Tunny.
I move to approve the monthly bills as presented.
Second by Jim. Any discussion? Okay, please call a vote.
Mrs. Briscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. McMillan?
Yes.
Mrs. Oost?
Yes.
Mrs. Tunny?
Yes.
Mrs. Zalinski?
Yes.
Mr. Andreessen?
Yes. Okay, motion passed. Next up is personnel.
I'll do it. I move to approve personnel recommendations, six D1 and 2 as presented, subject to successful background test if applicable.
Second.
Second by Julie. Any discussion? Please call a vote.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. McMillan?
Yes.
Mrs. Oost?
Yes.
Mrs. Tunny?
Yes.
Mrs. Zalinski?
Yes.
Mr. Andreessen?
Yes.
Mrs. Briscoe?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. Next up is consent agenda.
I move to approve consent agenda, item six, D1 and 2 as presented.
Second.
Second by Lisa. Any discussion? Please call a vote.
Mrs. McMillan?
Yes.
Mrs. Oost?
Yes.
Mrs. Tunny?
Yes.
Mrs. Zalinski?
Yes.
Mr. Andreessen?
Yes.
Mrs. Briscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes. Okay, motion passed. Next up is the MES front door replacement project.
I move to approve the base bid of $81,313 to Pennsyl Building Inc. For total amount for this project not to exceed $105,730 as presented.
Second.
Wow, everybody was all over that one, eh?
Lisa, take that.
All right. Okay, I thought I heard Jim, but we'll go Lisa. Any discussion? Please call a vote.
Mrs. Oost?
Yes.
Mrs. Tunny?
Yes.
Mrs. Zalinski?
Yes.
Mr. Andreessen?
Yes.
Mrs. Briscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. McMillan?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. Next up is the MES parking lot expansion and MIS hard surface play area.
I move, well, we could like alternate words. I move to approve awarding the bid for the MES parking lot expansion and MIS hard surface play area to Evans and Son Blacktop Inc. For an amount not to exceed 881,400 as presented.
Second.
Caught sleeping. Okay, any discussion? Okay, please call a vote.
Mrs. Tunny?
Yes.
Mrs. Zalinski?
Yes.
Mr. Andreessen?
Yes.
Mrs. Briscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. McMillan?
Yes.
Mrs. Oost?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. Next up is items for the February 21st agenda. Yes, Schedule A, right, Miss Troy? Uh, okay.
Might be wrong on that one.
Yeah. Ooh, wow, that one, man.
That's a bad joke. I don't believe I said it.
Yes. Um, all right, Dr. Shaw, you gotta have something, right? The buses, we're gonna, I mean, you always have stuff, right?
I'll have two items. The bids are quotes for the electrical work at MES and the district office, and then the buses, the buses.
Okay, always the big spender. Anything else for the items? Okay, here now, next steps for follow up with your discussion and or action items?
Well, I perhaps had it misplaced earlier. But did anyone have any questions about the memo that about trying to move forward with the policy committee? I recommended that we appoint representatives next month, and then that we have the first order of business being establishing a calendar. And I gave some suggestions and everything. And if it's not appropriately placed for discussion here, we can we can wait till next month and put it as a an action item, if that's more appropriate.
Any questions on Julie's proposal for the policy committee?
It's more of a suggestion. I think that we should at some point establish with these committees some protocol on how we choose parents to participate in these committees, and maybe teachers, maybe that's satisfied by the MTA. Maybe they appoint, and they do that part. But for for the board to potentially have terms for parents serving on those committees to allow for new parents to come in to the committees and get an opportunity to to serve. And and with that, I think that we would also apply that to the finance committee that exists currently right now, allowing an opportunity for new people to come in and establishing what, you know, potentially a term is, what happens if, you know, somebody at during the course is now unable to serve, you know, what triggers a replacement, or maybe a substitute or alternate. And we build in that language to the new policy committee, and then just kind of apply that to all board committees.
Any other discussion on that? So the good news is, the policy committee has already been approved. So usually, when we propose something, we have to propose it for one month, and then you vote on it the following month. But since this has already been approved, we don't necessarily need to propose something in February and not take action item on it till March. So we can take action in February if that's the will of the board. So just a clarification there that we don't have to wait till March, because I do agree that we probably sooner rather than later get moving on that. So any other discussion on that?
So are we just gonna add it as a formal item for next month and hash out whatever form the ultimately go with? Is that?
I think January 31st meeting would be the bid. It's about to talk about that as a group.
Okay.
Because we're all gonna be together anyways.
Well, the good news is, we don't set the agenda for that meeting until three weeks from now. So we have plenty of time to kind of, you know, figure it out where where it's going to go and win and things like that. And if you want to talk about it on the 31st, we can talk about it on the 31st. So can do that. Okay, for the good of Mokina? I have a.
Eric, sorry.
Sorry, did I not did I move on? More discussion?
Are we, yeah, are we talking about the parent teacher advisory committee? Where are we with that?
Ken, Mark, go ahead.
We don't have a parent teacher advisory committee. The role of the parent teacher advisory committee was delegated to a superintendent's advisory committee. I have a memo from Steve Stein going back to 2012, prior to anybody else being on the board that I found. My predecessor had the parent advisory team. The parent teacher advisory committee doesn't exist. So I know I did receive an email about the meeting next week. You asked me to have this parent teacher advisory committee OMA compliant, have an open meeting at 9:00 AM when we have students in the building. I have concerns about that. If there's going to be a parent teacher advisory committee established, my suggestion to the board will be that it stays within the boundaries of the policy, which states talks about student discipline in the handbook, which next week's meeting is not about. Next week's meeting is about the wellness policy. I just don't understand what the request is, and I don't know that it has the consensus of the board. So at this point in time, I guess I need some direction in terms of this, you know, if this is going to be a different committee, which I don't think the board has agreed to, then I need to have who's running it, who's establishing the agenda, and I need to let the parents know if this is going to be something that needs to be tabled, that I'm have to cancel next week's meeting. But this is not your email saying that we're going to have three board members attend, and we need to make it OMA compliant was all news to me today.
So if we reference board policy, we the board established the parent teacher advisory committee when it adapted adopted the board policy on committees, which was, I believe, revised and adopted as recently again as last year. So there is a board policy that we have a standing parent teacher advisory committee that exists currently today. I was told that your superintendent's committee was servicing the district in place of that committee without without the teachers. But regardless, we do, the board has already adopted a policy saying we have a parent teacher advisory committee. So I just fail to see why we would have to vote on something that we are saying in our policy we already have, and we should be doing.
I guess all I'm saying is that the committee that, when I asked for parent volunteers last April, the committee that we established, or I established with the 10 parents who come in, was not established as a board committee. Board committees are the representatives selected by the board president. They were not. Those meetings are subject to OMA, which I would not have an open meeting during hours when students are in session. I don't I don't think that's wise to just have folks coming in and checking in, walking through the building. Nor do we have the personnel to supervise visitors in an open meeting. This meeting has never been like that. Traditionally, that's been delegated to superintendent. If the board would like to take that back, you are more than welcome to do so. But this was a surprise to me, and we would have to post this by tomorrow with an agenda in order to meet the requirements of OMA. And I don't have a directive from the full board to do that.
Okay, so I agree that there's, I mean, this has been going on for months. So this is, you know, this conversation has been had for months. There's a discrepancy between what we're doing and what our policy says we're doing. I believe that is how I could just kind of tie a bow on where we're at today. So what is the board's suggestion on how to address the fact that we have already established a board committee called the parent teacher advisory committee, which I was told is currently being executed via the superintendent's parent advisory group, which is not a board committee called parent teacher advisory. So, you know, we're missing teachers, we're missing the board. How do we cure this? We can't just keep doing it, right? I mean, is that? Is that the answer? We have a policy saying?
Well, the answer was provided in December, when we asked our attorney to give us three, give us where we go from here, and he gave us three options. It's my understanding that when the board first first step would be to take a look at this policy in general. We are not required by statute to have a standing committee of this type. We are required to have a parent teacher advisory committee, which reviews the parent student handbook and student discipline. We've met that requirement through the parent advisory team, and there have been more things added to that plate. Going back to my predecessor, looking at the referendum, looking at how we spend title monies, et cetera. So there has been a history of that group existing inside of the school district. My suggestion would be to convene the policy committee and review this policy and decide which way you want to go. John had given us three options. One was to make it a board committee, and so, you know, very similar to finance committee. One was to leave it as superintendent's committee and rewrite the policy. The third was to leave it a superintendent's committee, just with the understanding that the superintendent, that committee would be addressing the requirements of the statute, which is that we go over disciplinary policy in the parent student handbook. As I've stated before, I'm agnostic about which way we choose to go. Does not matter to me. But I do feel very strongly that we cannot make this change for Monday. I just don't support having an open meeting when children are in session.
Okay, so let's talk about, perhaps we should talk about why it would be a bad idea to have a parent teacher advisory committee that we currently say that we have as a board committee. You know, what it what is the resistance to doing what our policy says? Why wouldn't we want to have a forum where we have parents and teachers and, you know, as a board committee, and come up with a agenda like the finance committee or a policy committee, and actually do what, again, we already are saying that we're doing?
I don't think it was broken. So why are we going to try to fix something that wasn't really broken?
Well, it's it's broken in the way of.
We need to go back, and then, like Dr. Cohen said, we'll go back, and we'll rewrite that policy, thanks, to comply with what we're doing.
Missing teachers out of the parent teacher advisory committee, can we address why we wouldn't want to include teachers in that group going forward?
I've attended a couple of the the meetings. And and correct me if I'm wrong. The teachers or administration that are pertinent to the topic are invited to the meeting. So I think it's perhaps So I think it's perhaps because it is held in the morning, and again, I'm speculating, because it's held during school hours, you know, they, Dr. Cohen gets a representative of the teachers or the administration, depending on the topic. You know, I, I, that's just the perception that I'm, that I'm getting. I do support the, that we do have a, a policy that says we do this and I consider this important because it's community outreach to me. You know, everybody can come and, and give their opinion on things. It doesn't need to take over what Dr. Cohen is doing because our policy also says the superintendent can have, here's her own committee or, excuse me, meeting. And, and I think that's, it's great and they, there's great interaction there. But I would be hesitant to take away and rewrite our policy without thinking it through. And I think that's what our attorney advised us to, to do is think it through, see what I, what we really want our policy to do. And I would just ask my fellow board members to, to think about that, how we engage the community better and not only two members to be able to hear some of that input. I think that's my biggest concern with the committee is I think it does great work. I'm not questioning that. It's only two members can hear at a time, which is why I'm more supportive of having a, the, what is currently in our policy. But, you know, again, I'm, I'm focused on looking through our policies, see what's working, what isn't, gather the data and, and then move forward from there. That's just some thoughts on it. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I, I agree. I think that, you know, not only, you know, having it open to board members, but having it open to our community to come and listen in on that meeting is what Julie just said. I mean, you know, it promotes engagement with our community and, and having teachers in the same room with parents and having, you know, productive conversations. I don't see any downside to that. And so that's kind of what I'm asking is what, you know, why would we be more supportive of modifying the policy where we don't do that instead of just doing what we currently have a policy saying that we are, will do? Why wouldn't we just do it? And if Dr. Cohen wants to continue to have, you know, what he has, I mean, that obviously like, you know, yeah, that's great. That's important and.
So I guess i- if there, if you, if you or anyone else on the board wants to propose a change, then I would suggest that you make a proposal and we can discuss it. I mean, discussing it right here, trying to approve or make a change, you need it written in paper, like, you know, something like Julie did for the policy. We need, we need some sort of structure. So if there's a desire and the will of the board is to change the delegation of this committee, is my understanding of that, then, you know, present a proposal and we will discuss it at the February meeting. And we have to, you know, whatever the will of the board is, then I will go that direction. But we need, we need something in writing that states what the changes are going to be and how it's going to work if we're going to make those changes. We can't.
What if we're not going to make the changes? I mean, the policy doesn't need to be changed for us to follow it. You know what I mean? Like the policy is already there. It already says that we're doing it. So I don't see how a proposal would be appropriate if I'm not, wouldn't be proposing changing anything. I'm just proposing doing it.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure I understand. You're, you just said you're not changing anything, but you're proposing to, I don't know what you're, I'm not understanding what you're saying. Sorry.
So I wouldn't be proposing to change the policy.
Okay.
I wouldn't be proposing to do, to change anything. We have a policy I believe we should be executing and, and it is not happening. So I, I don't know how to just have the board do what we say we're doing.
Go ahead. I will be patient.
Okay.
Hang on a second. I don't think you're a mic, you got one of those, the one button one doesn't work, right? So you can have that.
So Dr. Cohen or Dr. Johnson.
It is on.
Um, I would like, if possible, a survey sent out to our staff to see what their opinion is on if that is something that they would even be interested in or if they have the time in their schedules to add on a meeting. Whoever's got time to do it within the time of next meeting, if possible, because I would like their opinions. You can have the floor, my friend.
May I?
Yes, you can. Yes.
You're so kind.
It's all yours.
Love you.
Hey, guys. I have two points. Nice and friendly, we're all sharing ideas. One, I love you. I really do. You guys want to stay in the classroom, right? Do we really want to sacrifice teaching time during a school day away from our children and for the added bonus, pay for a substitute teacher to take care of the kids because we are complicating their day during the school year? I'm going to guess no, but that's just me. As a parent and a guy sitting in right here, I would like you guys to stay in the classroom during the day because quite honestly, that's what you're being paid to do. I think that's what you're trained to do and I think that is a better use of your time because having you in front of our children is a good thing. Point two, we keep going around and around on this, so I'm going to read from our attorney verbatim. Point two, we have an option without any problems at all, which has been reviewed and paid money to review. Option two, leave it as a superintendent's committee. Let the superintendent or designee decide the committee membership. Hi, keep the PTAC out of having to comply with OMA and leave the current policy as is by simply acknowledging that the board has delegated responsibility for the PTAC to the superintendent designee, superintendent designee, I apologize, which we've been doing for 12 years at least. So what we're doing is not broken. What we're doing is legally permissible. What we're doing is better for the use of our teachers' time. I am fine for listening and making things better, but in all fairness, my guess is if you guys told me you'd want to be in the classroom during the day and that is what our attorney is telling us we can do, I see no problem with carrying on. There's always room for improvement. By having people walk around our building during the day while students are here is a non-starter. It is. And then insinuating that what we are doing is violating some kind of policy is not factually adequate or accurate, I should say. No judgments on anybody, but I am reading verbatim what he says. So what we're doing is fine. There's always room for improvement, but I wanted to share that. Thank you.
In addition to surveying the teachers, can we survey the community and the parents also to see what the interest would be on them having a parent teacher advisory committee on the board or a board committee, I should say?
Well, I was going to suggest that, and with all due respect, Lisa, a parent or a survey of the staff doesn't honor our collective bargaining agreements with the MTA and the MCSA. The MTA and the MCSA leadership are the exclusive bargaining representatives of those units and so we'll be working directly with them. We meet once a month. I say that tongue in cheek because I probably harass Heather and Debbie three times a week. I don't think there's any shortage four, four times a week.
Can we get a five?
Only three times this week. This morning I came into the district office and Debbie's standing there. I'm like, are you here for me? So I would say there's probably no shortage of feedback when it comes to our teachers and, and we try and keep lines of communication open. The entire purpose of, of the parent teacher advisory committee is born out of communication about student issues. It was revised under Senate Bill 100 where we have very clear rules about what we can and cannot do with discipline. We have rules for student conduct, rules for medications, et cetera. While Board Policy 2260 is designed to be very inclusive in terms of the people it collects feedback from, it's also very well defined in terms of what the outcomes are. The outcomes are really just to refine our policies and procedures when it comes to managing student conduct. You know, if we were to start talking about something other than that and go down a different direction, it would have, just have to be very well defined. Like, for example, if we were to have a meeting and the meeting were to involve parents to be open to the public, would it be, still be a represent, because the 10 people that are currently on the committee, the 10 parents, were selected because there's a representative sample from each building, we have at least one parent of a child with special needs, we have a parent of a child who is at the top end of the academic spectrum, we have, so we have sort of a mix. And now my predecessor had three parents only on the parent advisory team. There's one from MES, one from MIS and one from the junior high. We've expanded that group since, since we started, restarted after COVID. If it was going to be a town hall type of meeting where anybody could come up and speak, I would have difficulty supporting that because sometimes those town hall meetings get way off track. I would want to keep that group where it becomes not representative necessarily of our entire student body. It could be predominantly attended by students from MES and maybe not the junior high. It could be predominantly attended by folks who have a certain socioeconomic status and not of others. And so maintaining equity in how we staff that committee is very important. It's actually in our policy. So, you know, we'd have to have more of a discussion about what it looks like. It's not just enough to say we'd have that committee, but what are the boundaries? You know, who's on it? The finance committee, we have a couple of representatives of the MTA, we have a couple of representatives of the MCSA, we have three or four parents and that's been pretty consistent of these people have left, they've been replaced. Is that same number of people what you were thinking or is it going to be different? You know, I can get stuck in my ways just like the next person. I try and embrace change, although it's sometimes it takes me a little while, but I would want to know more about the why, the who, the how, the when, before we make any sweeping changes. And just to know that, again, I think I can't remember who it was, maybe it was Anna that said this, like what problem are we trying to solve? You know, if the problem is a policy, you know, alignment with policy, we can fix the procedure or we can, we can adjust the policy. Either one of those is open to us. You know, again, we also have other options as well, but, you know, this is not, you know, of all the priorities we have right now as a district, you know, solving a disciplinary problem is not necessarily one of them. If we wanted to establish a group though to look at something else that's a burning issue, we could certainly do that.
So I think what I'm hearing is like, it's bad. Board, board, it's the will of the board, it's that our super, our, our board attorney said that's what we're doing is people, keep doing it. I think that's our policy, maybe we could find it better, say that it's delegated or it's, you know, they think differently. When you look at that, but doesn't seem like right now the, the will.
Thank you. The desire to make a change, at least I'm not seeing four people that, that are standing up to say, make that change. And I would agree that we can maybe, as this policy committee gets going, talk about the delegation of it and then maybe what we do is talk about, you know, how to evolve this maybe going forward into something else or something. I mean, my hesitation too is, you know, thank you for the fourth grade teachers for being here, but you know, I'm not sure the teachers really want another activity at night to be involved in. I don't want to speak for them, but I, I'm sure they'd rather be home with their families and things like that. There's maybe other avenues that we could approach that suppose or require some teachers. Maybe there's teachers that just want to come. I could be wrong, but I, I think from what I'm hearing right now, the, you know, we can look to maybe define how the wording is and then, you know, if we want to look into other avenues or other committees, we can maybe do that. But that's this, my sense of the will of the board. I could be wrong, but I'm looking around for some shakes. Heads.
Well, I guess from here, my only next step suggestion would be that, you know, we've talked about this a lot over, you know, for months, like I said. I think as long as we're on the topic, we should just fix and get in alignment with our policy and figure out how we get there and actually make that change. Now that we see that there's a discrepancy, let's just fix it now. That would be my suggestion.
I don't understand that there is discrepancy. As Jim just quoted, our lawyer is telling us that there is. Policy, or, I'm sorry, superintendent's committee, which we are, so there's no discrepancy.
No, sorry. So if you read Board Policy 2150, we currently have a parent teacher advisory committee, which is a board committee.
Right.
Which is OMA compliant, which needs to be OMA compliant. Any board committee needs to be OMA compliant. So that's where the discrepancy is.
There is no discrepancy.
Well, that's where the discrepancy is. Right now, we don't have a board committee, parent teacher advisory. We have a superintendent's committee.
We have a board committee that we acknowledge is run by our superintendent. That's what the lawyer says.
Dr. Cohen, do we have a superintendent's committee currently or do we have a board committee that is delegated to you currently?
It's currently a superintendent's committee.
So that's where the difference is.
So if the, if so, like there, again, there are three options. If option two is not agreeable, then, you know, the other option would be to revise the policy and to strike that committee from, from the policy. If that, I mean, if that's what I'm hearing, the will of the board is, to strike the parent teacher advisory committee line altogether. But we are required by statute to have a parent teacher advisory committee to assist with development of student behavior policy and procedure. It is not required that it is a board committee. If the, if the board is okay with me continuing on to manage the parent student handbook, you have final approval anyway of the parent student handbook as a board of ed, then we can just bring a, do a first read on an amended pol, this one policy, striking number two next month, a second read in March and approve it. And then the issue is no longer an issue. Is, is that kind of where, is that agreeable to the board?
Well, I, I think we need to amend the policy to reflect what's currently happening at a minimum. You know, it doesn't necessarily state that the board committee has been delegated to a superintendent's committee. We can get into semantics of how you can do all that stuff. So I, I oppose yes. That's, that's, I don't hear the will of the board to change anything right now. So let's just maybe take a stab at trying to state that this board committee has been delegated to the superintendent and it's considered a superintendent's committee that has been vetted by our board attorney that said, states that it's legal and we comply with state statute.
That's what I was just going to say, Eric. It may be an action item for next month where we, we, we vote on formalizing that it be a super delegated. I think if we just make that a quick action item, then we can formalize that.
Is the behavioral interventions committee, is that a board committee currently or do we need to modify that?
No, that's always fallen under the purview of the assistant or the director of student services, right?
So we need to strike that one as well?
Was that been delegated or is that?
That is a fantastic question. Yeah, I found a memo from 2012 that has Steve Stein recommending the board that the parent teacher advisory committee fall under the superintendent. I didn't actually have a chance to go and pull old agendas out of the archive room to see whether or not there was an actual, where action was taken on this, but there was an action request from 11 years ago. I would have to do the same for that group as well.
All right, so, so for February's meeting, we can look at these policies and we can figure out how we need to word them and we can discuss, but there's some research that might need to be done, I guess, on some of them.
We can work on that and have something for the board to consider next month.
Any other discussion? Okay, for the good of Mokina.
I have a quick one. I just wanted to recognize the two students from MIS for the Mokina Fire Protection Essay Contest, Vincent Bensick, I think I'm saying that right, and Claire Roberts. They are two of the students that are in the top three for the essay contest. February 13th, at the trustee meeting is when they're going to announce the winners. So I just wanted to. I just wanted to say congrats to them for being finalists.
And congrats, Mrs. Kearney, for being a teacher. You sound proud, you guys. Yeah, big smile. Okay. Anything else for the Goodemokina? No?
No.
Okay. I move that the Board of Education adjourned to closed session for purposes of the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, and dismissal of employees and collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives with no action after closed session, and, and the placement of individual students in special education programs and other matters related to individual students. Second by Lisa. Any discussion? Okay. Please call the vote.
Mrs. Zalinski.
Yes.
Mr. Andrisian.
Good night.
Mrs. Briscoe.
Yes.
Mr. Bush.
Yes.
Mrs. McMillan.
Yes.
Mrs. Ost.
Yes.
Mrs. Tunny.
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. Thank you, everyone, for coming. Board, 10-minute break, and then we'll convene. You're on the clock, Dr. Shaw, or you're not?